Good evening. The San Dimas City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 22nd, will come to order. Please rise and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turned me off. What am I supposed to say?
Just be ready. Okay, we'll go on to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual agenda item except for the public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on this posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to by staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes. Prior to opening up for public speaking, I would like to ask our new San Dimas Sheriff's Station Captain Mike Mowen, if he has a few words for us.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, audience. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is now Captain Michael Mowen. I just got here from Temple Station. I worked over there for four years. Recently assigned here as of Sunday. I am very excited to be here and I'm looking forward to working with everybody. You'll see me at the community events. Please come up and say hi. I'm very personable, so I'd like to meet everybody and see and just get to know everybody. So I'm looking forward to working with the council and staff, and I appreciate the welcoming.
Thank you. Mike, you've got more to say? We set aside 35 minutes.
Oh, I could keep talking. I mean, I could remember a lot for a while, but that was about the gist of it. I mean, I grew up in the area. Just a little background, I grew up in-
Thank you, Mike.
Oh. I thought you wanted me to talk.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have Amy Liu with the San Dimas Library News.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to share with the brand-new school year starting. We also have our bookmark contest beginning next Tuesday, the 2nd of September, running to October 18th. This is an opportunity for students to create their own bookmark, and if they are advanced, their bookmark gets printed. It gets distributed throughout the whole county. So we encourage all the teachers out there, parents out there, to encourage the young artists to join in. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only speaker card, Mayor.
And let's see if anybody else has anything they'd like to say. Margie? I'm getting a little bit... You guys are trying to set a record right now. All right. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to give council just a preview of some of the special events that we have coming up. The first, actually, it's a programming update. Aquatics, we have had a lot of swim lessons during the summer, very, very successful. Registration is open for the fall session of swim lessons, which is August 30th to October 4th. The cost is $66. We encourage folks to register before the spots are all taken up. For special events, the big one that's coming up is Saturday, September 27th. That's the Running Scared 5K Fun Run and Toddler Trot. It will be held at Civic Center Park, and I know last year we had over 400 runners. We're expecting a pretty big turnout again this year. A very popular event. That's $30 for the 5K, $20 to register for the Fun Run, and $12 to register for the Toddler Trot. I'm going to talk about two events sort of coming up in October, and I know that's a long ways off, so I'll briefly mention them now and kind of put the date in residents' minds. Wednesday, October 15th, there is a free Health and Resource Fair at the Stanley Plumber Building. That's here in Civic Center Plaza, part of City Hall. It's from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock, and some of the benefits, you can get free flu vaccines and also health screenings, and a lot of great information on health and wellness from all the vendors that will be present. And the last big event that we have coming up is Saturday, October 18th. That is the Halloween Spooktacular, and that will be held at Civic Center Park, 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. It will be very similar to last year. Will include the trunk-or-tree, the costume contests, the game booths, and food vendors. So we hope folks will join us for those. I'll be providing some updates on these events and future city council meetings, but it's good to get those dates out here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone have any questions, or Scott? All right. Seeing no more questions or anyone wishing to speak, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council requests a separate discussion.
Move approval?
Mr. Mayor, before we get into that, I had a question for the city attorney regarding item number five. Item number five in that claim, there are three individuals listed in that claim specifically named, and it would be myself as well as two other members of the council. I'm just curious. I know the recommendation was to deny the claim. Is that something that we should recuse ourselves from? And if so, then what is the procedure then for the votes needed to take care of that? Or if not, then we'll just move forward?
You do not need to recuse yourself. That's something that happens a lot, that council members are named personally in lawsuits, and it does not require a recusal.
Thank you.
The three-year contract renewal with intelligent contracts.
All right, we'll go ahead and pull item number nine. Do I have a motion on items one through eight?
I'll move approval for items one through eight. Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. We'll go to item number nine, Mr. McConnell. Okay, who's going to address this on the staff level?
Good evening. I- There we go.
Good evening, John Lee, IT manager with the city.
Thank you, John. I know that we implemented this in 2022, and I was just looking for a quick update in terms of how it's gone. Have we saved any money? What's an example of how you've benefited from this? And just kind of a general sense of, since I know when we implemented it, we had some questions about what it would do and how beneficial it would be. I just thought it would be good to hear before we knew it what your thoughts are. It sounds like you like it since we're renewing it.
So this was a collaborative effort between all departments to find a solution in addressing our contract management processing within the city. After extensive research back three years ago, we landed on this product that can address our weaknesses in terms of taking care of contracts, taking care of contracts to maintain the workflow process of storing as well as keeping updated with all this sort of insurance certificates and others to make sure we're on par with the documents. In speaking with other departments, we've had positive reviews of the product as well as the process and the workflow here at the city, and as a result, working with the city clerk's office, we opted to continue the relationship with the provider for additional three years.
Has there been part of it or any aspect of it that hasn't lived up to expectations, or has it pretty much met everything that was promised to you during the procurement process?
It's pretty much met all the procurement process, as in all applications and implementations of new products. There's always bugs and/or small workflows that we had to work through, but we're right now at a stable situation where we're comfortable enough to feel confident that we would like to continue to use the product as well as enhance the features and use it more robust as need be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no further questions. I appreciate your time.
I have a motion.
Set moved. Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries for item number nine on the consent calendar. Okay, we'll move on to other business, an update on city boards, commissions, and committees. Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and members of the audience. This report provides an overview of the updates to the city's boards, commissions, and committees' policies and processes, outlines a request to advertise an unscheduled vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and introduces the city's newly-appointed youth commissioner. In May of 2024, the City Council approved significant updates to the Boards and Committees Handbook. Two primary areas of change were the appointment process, where a zero-term policy was adopted effective through the 2026 election cycle. This ensured that all commissioners were, at the time, were automatically reappointed during this transition. Appointments for new commissioners now begin six months following the certification and swearing-in of newly-elected council members, typically on the second Tuesday of the month, unless impacted by special elections or circumstances. The other area that was updated were the terms of service. Adjustments were made to better align the appointments with alternating election cycles and to create a staggered appointment structure. For districts one and three, they have currently moved from the zero-term policy, and they are now on their the first term cycle for those two districts. Additionally, for commissions and boards composed of five city council-appointed positions, that would be the Equestrian, Parks and Recreation, Planning, Public Safety, and the Senior Commission, each council member nominates an individual to serve. Another new component of the overhaul was the establishment of a non-voting youth commissioner seat on each commission. These positions are open to student residents of San Dimas between the ages of 16 and 21, serving one-year and serving one-year terms. Selection is handled by city staff in collaboration with local schools. For the unscheduled vacancy in May of 2025, Commissioner Jesse Ash notified the city of his resignation from the Parks and Recreation Commissioner. Commissioner Ash had been appointed by the mayor. With this resignation, staff is requesting city council approval to advertise to fill the expired first term for Commissioner Ash. The next scheduled meeting of the commission is September 16th of 2025. The next section that we are going to address is the appointment of a new youth commissioner. And on the 12th of August, myself, the Parks and Recreation Manager and Parks and Recreation Supervisor, interviewed Maya Yasen, a resident and junior at Glendora High School. Maya was approved and selected to be appointed as the non-voting youth commissioner on the Parks and Recreation Commission. She has demonstrated qualities of leadership, civic engagement, and community involvement that reflect the intent behind establishing a youth commissioner. Her appointment provides young residents of San Dimas an opportunity to participate in local government and develop leadership experience while also strengthening collaboration between the city and its schools. Maya is here in the audience to meet all of the council members, and I'd like to invite her to the podium if she'd like to address council.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm sorry, I'm crying. I'm so excited. My name is Maya Yasen. I just turned 16 years old in May, and I am so excited and so honored to be given this position, and I can't wait to make San Dimas an even better place than it already is and to bring our community even closer together, and I'm so excited to work with every single one of you. Thank you.
I think during the interview, Maya mentioned, I think she had a sister, older sister, that was part of the youthing government a couple of years ago that shadowed one of the council members, so family that is very involved.
I think I was the fortunate person that she shadowed, and it was a great pleasure. I think we ought to note that Ms. Yasen lives here in the city of San Dimas. I know it said, you know, she goes to Glendora High School, but she is a resident, a very active resident at Lone Hill and San Dimas High, and now she has gone on to Glendora, but the requirements require that they live in the city. It doesn't necessarily say that you need to be a student of San Dimas High School.
Yeah, and the overall intent is that these positions are available to any student between the ages of 16 and 21 that are attending any of the local schools, high schools, colleges, or universities.
Three of us want to Glendora High, so don't worry about it. You're going to be just fine.
Well, wait a minute. All right, does anyone have any questions, or would somebody like to make a motion?
I had one question. We are so excited to have you participate in our city, and it's just so great to see you step up and volunteer. I had one question. I noticed on your application you had listed the Public Safety Commission as your top choice, and I see you're being appointed or now you interviewed for the Parks and Recs post. Was there a reason for that, why you decided to change, or?
So as I grow up, I really want to get involved in the city, and as I go into college, I want to go the pre-law track. So that's why I had initially put Public Safety as my first option, but going into my interview and talking about how much I love this community and growing up going to all of the Parks and Recreation events made me realize that I would probably be best fit for a Parks and Recreation Commission because it's something that I'm so passionate about and something that I grew up in and that I think I would be able to make the most difference.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, all I can say is, I know you have schoolwork and things like that, but you can always go to a Public Safety Commission meeting and sit in and listen to it, and there is a time that you can speak up, and I'm sure that the people that are there would love to listen to you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Set moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, I might add that Mrs. Yasen is a prominent member of our educational staff. I believe she's a counselor at Lone Hill, and thank you very much for what you do every day. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next issue, opening up the application process. So how would you like to address that?
I just need a consensus or vote directing me to advertise-
And how long is that?
For the opening.
How long is that period of time?
Generally, we do it for a month. It just depends on how much interest we pull in, how many applications we get. I think currently we have two on file already because we do accept them year-round. We hold on to them for a year. But generally, we do it, an advertisement, for a year. I did mention that their next meeting is September 16th, so it really is the pleasure of the council how long you would like me to run that advertisement for. It could be until we get X number of applications in which, so we've got, I think, like three weeks before the next meeting. So that could be enough time to advertise and receive applications for the mayor to review and make a selection, and then bring back before, so the next council meeting to appoint would be September 9th, and they would be able to be seated for the 16th meeting. That might be a little fast, but other than that, they would not be able to meet the next commission meeting until October, November.
I think that's pretty fast to try to turn around.
You have plenty of time to interview.
The commission has enough commissioners to meet and-
Or a quorum, yes.
Make a quorum, right?
Yes.
I don't see any rush in getting the the process completed, so I don't know. I would be okay if we waited, you know, to get them selected and seated by the end of October.
I guess the, two things. One is, thank you for the report on this because I hadn't seen what we did after our study sessions and weekends to do this policy, but seeing it the way you presented it, I think, shows the thought that went into this and all of that. To that point, this is the mayor's vacancy, right, in terms of the appointment?
Yes.
So my preference would be to defer to the mayor on what you feel in terms of urgency to fill it.
How many applications do we normally get when one vacancy? I mean, what would be the minimal number of applications that we have to do before we do the interview?
Generally, it averages about three.
So right now, we have two.
Two, mhm.
But we need to publicly notify it?
We do. We do need to legally advertise for the vacancy.
Right. Let me make it clear. I have the time to be, to put into it. The question is, do the public have enough time to mull it around now that we're making announcement? So that's, you know, now you've got less than 10 days, per se, between the time we need to be able to make that appointment, right?
Well, that's only if you're trying to get them seated for the September meeting, which we don't need to do.
Okay, I think I would prefer to go ahead and wait and then do the proper, the 20 days that we normally would do, and then take the applications from there. That's what I would prefer.
I agree with the mayor.
Any problems? That'll be a consensus.
Okay, I will, that advertisement will go out by the end of this week, and it will be on the city's, we'll notify it on the city's website, and it will go out through social media.
Okay. Now, the next question I have is, this is to fulfill a vacancy made by Jesse Ash. Okay, when will this person's, they'll only be to that end of his regular term, right?
Yes, and he, in 2024, 20... He started, so the official full term one started October of 2024 of last year. So this person is fulfilling an unexpired first term that would run through 2026.
Right, and then he could additionally, two additional terms or one additional?
One.
One additional term?
Yes.
All right. Okay, we'll move on. Okay, our second other business is proposal regulatory signage for dogway stations on city trails. Staff?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if it's all the same to the council, I know I requested this item. The staff report, I think, is pretty clear. Given the current budgetary discussions, I would just prefer to table this item and reconsider it at a later time. I don't think there's any need for us to go through the presentation unless anyone else would like to hear it.
I was looking forward to a discussion on how we could upsize this and make it horse-size.
I'm completely open to that after June.
All right, sounds good.
I support that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we need a motion? Okay, we'll table this item till, the date uncertain. How are we doing on time? Because I've got to beat the last time recording these guys.
I did want to say good job, Scott, on the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Mr. Farmer as well, thank you.
I hope you have a little good drive home. Hope there's no traffic. Okay, oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes or as may be determined by the chair. Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time? Wait a minute, Captain. I was just about ready to pull you up. Yeah. Okay, I'll let you catch Mr. Farmer a little later.
Five minutes.
All right, anyone else? No one wishing to speak to the council at this time? Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. A couple of updates tonight. First one, the construction of the City Hall roof is scheduled to take place September 15th to October 17th. The construction of the roof is not anticipated to impact any special events, scheduled meetings, or normal business operations. However, during this time, some parking spots closest to the building might be impacted and unavailable for material. So if you see that happening, that's what's going on in the parking lot. Sewer rehabilitation, the sanitation district will be rehabilitating an existing sewer line that stretches across the cities of San Dimas and Laverne. The sewer work stretches approximately 18,000 square feet, starting from Valley Center Avenue and will continue eastbound along Sianiga Avenue and other streets, ending at Sedalia Avenue. More information on this project can be found by visiting www.lacsd.org or by contacting the district resident engineer at 562-561-7242. The reason I mention this is it is going to be an impact and a big construction project stretching across the city, so it is part of the sanitation district, but if anybody wants more information, feel free to reach out. Next one, exciting item on- Next one, exciting item on August twenty-ninth, our recently redesigned website will launch a new AI chat box that will provide instant conversational answers to common questions from learning from our city website's information. The tool aims to improve the user experience, reduce routine inquiries to staff, and ensure consistent information, um, provided across all departments. The chat feature is maintained by the website provider, and it will take time to redefine the responses, so staff will continue, continue to monitor for accuracy and gather feedback and make adjustments as needed, um, in the next following weeks, but that should be a, a cool tool for our community to go in there and get instant responses and, and answers to questions. Um, next update is, registration is now open for new Community Emergency Response Team, also known as CERT, uh, trainings. These free trainings are available to San Dimas residents and those who work in the city. It's a great opportunity to learn how to protect your family, your neighbors, your community, um, during emergencies. The program kicks off with orientation on Saturday, October fifth, from ten AM to four PM at the senior center, and over the following weeks, participates will take, participants will take part in evening sessions that focus on fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. The training wraps up with a final exercise where participants will put their new skills to the test, and by the end of the program, graduates will be prepared to step in and assist during disasters, uh, becoming an important part of the city's volunteer network. And for those that are interested, please visit, um, the San Dimas website at www.sandemaca.gov slash CERT, C-E-R-T, for more information. So hopefully that'll fill up, um, where, uh, the CERT team is, is getting more and more active, and having more members is, is always a benefit to the community. And lastly, uh, city, uh, reminder that city offices will be closed next Monday, September first, for Labor Day. With that concludes my, my comments for tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Any questions of the city manager?
Uh, would it be possible to name that AI chat bot on our website after the mayor? So it looks like people are talking directly to him.
Chat with the mayor, yeah, we could, we could look into that. Ask the mayor.
We had that-
Bringing it back. Improved.
It's about as close as it's gonna get right now. All right, anything else? Mr. Uh, City Attorney, sir?
I have no city attorney reports tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to members of the city council. Council members' reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency pursuant to AB one, two, three, four. Anyone, do anything? We'll move on to, uh, council members', uh, requests for further future items. Mr. Weber.
Apparently, I'm caught up with my monitor here, pardon me. Uh, I don't have any requests for future items, I just wanted to extend my congratulations to Captain Moen. I know the, uh, the process, uh, that you guys have to go through to get, uh, to this particular point in your career is arduous, so I want to congratulate you on navigating that successfully. Um, I know that, uh, that it is a lot to, to take in and a big role change, but, uh, I'm confident that you're gonna be able to step it up, uh, step up to the plate and handle the challenge. Um, I think, uh, we've got many years of working together, uh, to look forward to, and, uh, I think it'll be great, so congratulations and welcome to San Dimas.
Ms. Plutakis.
You never know what order it's gonna be. Um, I have nothing, um, to ask to be agendized, but I did want to, um, discuss safety in San Dimas. So, the safety of San Dimas is obviously our number one priority, and that includes clearing homeless encampments, and I wanted to share a success story. Um, on Thursday, I was notified with some pictures of the homeless encampment that was on the fifty-seventh freeway at West Sianega. By Friday, city staff had already contacted Caltrans, and because we have a fantastic relationship, it was cleared out on Friday. I know there's a lot of talk that sometimes these encampments, it looks like we're not doing anything. We are working our hardest to get these encampments cleared. People keep coming back, but we keep working hard to clear them. We have a new captain who knows that this is important to us, he's going to continue to help us, and please, as a resident, if you see something, say something. We have the MySanDimas app as a resource. Take the time, put the map in, send a picture in, you will get an email back confirming that you're, um, it's been received, and then you will get a follow-up update on what's going on. It may not always be so fast because things do take some time, but it doesn't mean that it's not important, and it doesn't mean that something won't happen, and then, of course, call our sheriffs because it is important. So, safety is a priority, and we are in it together, but please help us continue to make these changes and keep San Dimas safe.
Mr. Nekonel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, uh, future items, I just wanted to echo what others have said. Extend my congratulations to Captain Moen. I'm looking forward to working with you. You have a stellar resume, and I know you're gonna be, bring a lot of value to the city of San Dimas, and we look forward to seeing, um, what you'll accomplish during your tenure. So, congratulations, and now the hard work begins, and we're here to support you and set you up for success. I also want to congratulate now Commissioner Yassine. Uh, I know you're gonna do great things, and as, uh, my colleague had mentioned, there are several of us who went to Glendora High School, so don't be ashamed of that. Could very well be a path to city council, hopefully in the near future for you as well. So, congratulations. We know you're gonna bring a lot to the commission, and we look forward to your ideas and the things that you're gonna do to invigorate the commission as well as our city. So, thank you for stepping up. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Last but not least.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just reviewing my notes for my speech. Uh, first and foremost, congratulations to you. I look forward to your service, and I think it's important that we have your perspective, uh, involved in the community. The more youth involved, the better, and, um, you know, as to the comment, it turns out the new captain also went to Glendora, uh, so, uh, that, uh, that's a, maybe a now publicly known fact. Um, to our new captain, congratulations, I'm very proud of you. Um, uh, some of you, if you get the opportunity to, uh, meet him, I've known him a while, and I will just say that, you know, when you come on the job, it's said that, uh, you, you always want people that you would feel comfortable handling a call for service with your own family, and, uh, and I know Captain Moen is that person, uh, as we've grown up together in the organization. Uh, on top of that, uh, his resume is impressive, and for where San Dimas is at in this place and this time, uh, having someone that not only has worked a patrol station and actively been assigned to a patrol station, but having somebody that also has worked as a deputy on the light rail system, uh, not just any light rail system, the very light rail system that we're about to have open here in the community, and also to be a manager and a watch commander, uh, and a lieutenant at a station that has a station just a few stops away from us in Dworthy, uh, I think brings a lot of value, uh, to our community as we look to wrestle with the upcoming excitement and challenges of our upcoming A-line station in September. So, uh, to Captain Moen, congratulations again, look forward to your service, and, uh, look forward to your leadership here, uh, in our community.
He, is that right? Next, yeah, uh, next time, give me the notes, I'll do your intro. Um, but, on, on the other hand, I also wanted to take a moment to say, uh, thank you to, uh, Rotary and to, uh, the Heroes and the Masonic Lodge. Uh, they had the food drive this weekend, and, uh, I told our incoming captain before we were gonna go out, uh, to celebrate, uh, that promotion, I said, "We need to go to Rotary and we need to donate food," and we did, and, uh, I just want to say it was great to, uh, see Raymond Foster and Dom and, and all the folks that were there. Uh, I hope we're able to go ahead and, uh, meet the targets, or exceed the targets, rather, that we have in the past. Uh, I tried to donate, uh, my weight in food, but Captain Moen needed equally as much rice, and, uh, we had the split was available over at, uh, Vons, or Albertson's. So, nevertheless, uh, I hope that went well, uh, but, uh, I think everybody did a great job, and, um, you know, I, I think we're very blessed. The other thing is, the heat has been insane, and so I hope everybody, please be mindful not just of, uh, yourselves and hydrate as we go through these periods of time, um, but also, uh, be mindful of those that are elderly and be mindful of your pets. Uh, it's definitely been challenging the last week, uh, and, um, this city offers the cooling centers at times when the temperature gets warm, uh, so I encourage everybody to follow, uh, the city's, uh, website and social media to be able to look for those opportunities. With that being said, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I just want to make a comment about our Parks and Recreation staff. We just completed a very, very successful year of Music in the Park. Uh, I don't think there's any way that the numbers in the past could exceed what we just saw this last eight weeks, ten weeks. Uh, please comment to your staff that the city council truly appreciated the fact, and, and I would say several thousands of people appreciate their, their work and, and time, and, uh, also, if you would, tell, call Mike, the ice cream guy, and say, "Lots of people liked the fact that he was there every, every, every day," but I appreciate it. As far as the, the new captain's concerned, I would have been better served if I just let him finish speaking, then I wouldn't have had to listen to Ryan. It, it took twice as much time, uh, but, uh, welcome. I do want to say that a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, the city manager, myself, and a volunteer, Larry Gianoni, along with representatives of both Catherine Barger's office and, uh, Solis, uh, Supervisor Solis, uh, we had the opportunity to, uh, interview five great candidates. All five of them, in their own right, could have easily stepped into this position as captain, but there were certain things that came up, as, as Ryan mentioned, uh, he was, uh, the, the patrol service that he was actively involved in now, as well as we were looking for someone who can help guide us through this, uh, new, new era that we have with the trains starting in two weeks, three weeks, uh, someone who's actually worked it, and those are some of the characteristics that the new captain has been bringing forth, and I'm quite sure that, from what I'm hearing, uh, he'll be well-accepted at the, the station, and, and thank you very much. Uh, I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to Lieutenant Louis, uh, Serrano, who stepped in at the right time and took over the command, uh, until, uh, a new captain had been named, and I just want to thank, thank Lieutenant Serrano for the job that he did. And, um, talked about Music in the Park, uh, is this the fastest meeting? If somebody told me this, because I want to make sure that, that it is. Uh, no, no, Ryan messed it up again. All right, okay, all right. Uh, if somebody would like to, uh, ask that we adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I did a receive and file on what I wanted, so I was trying to help you out.
Yeah. So, anyone, any opposition?
No.
No? Okay, this meeting is adjourned until, uh, two weeks.